Okay, we will call the Springfield Planning Commission to meet for January 3rd, 2019 to order and stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By present, for absent, we have a quorum.
Okay, before we get started with the old minutes, I wanted to thank everybody for being on this board. I'm sure you don't get enough thanks, so we'll take time to thank you now for being on the board for another year. And after the middle school kids came last week, I thought, you know, we don't agree on everything on this board, but we've got one thing in common: we all love Springfield. We want it to be better, or as good as it can be, anyway. So maybe those kids will hang around and, you know, make a life here for themselves. That's all I had to throw in there. But thanks for being on the board. All right, we're ready for a motion to approve the minutes from last night.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Who got the second?
Alan Powell.
Okay, thank you.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll stand approved. Under new business, we have one item that we need to add to the agenda if we can, if you want to. It's item number five. That was not in the original packet, Sleepy Hollow, a letter of credit. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Take it.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll add that to the bottom. That'll be item number five. Item number one is a rezoning request by Harvey Combs, parcels eight and nine of tax map, 92H. Is there a motion for discussion of item number one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
No.
Any opposed? Okay. What do we have here, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we have is a property owner, Combs Industrial Services, Harvey Combs. He bought several pieces of property on Bradley Drive, right off of Bill Jones Industrial Drive, down from the David Ingrir Fire Station. And originally, just a quick history, originally, all those properties in that little subdivision were zoned RI. And then over time, they got zoned to MRO, some got zoned to MRO, some stayed RI. And so Mr. Combs owns properties that are RI and are MRO. And so he wants to zone the MROs to RI, which will allow him to do a small storage-type venue in that, as opposed to the MRO, which won't let him do that.
You're talking about storage units?
Units, yes, sir. And actually, I don't even know that he's gonna do it. I think he's gonna rezone this property. He may sell it to somebody to do that.
Move the properties, join each other?
Yes, they do. If you, was it in the packet? They are lots seven and eight, and they are right next to lots six and five, or right next to lot six. And so six and five are already RI. And that was...
One more.
But if you look on the tax map, there are parcels eight and nine. Parcel seven is already RI, parcel six is already RI. So he's just making his...
He says he's gonna put up storage units like the red dot thing?
Yes. Now, that's what he says, and that use is allowed, but he's already submitted a site plan to us for lot seven for an on-site environmental service, which is allowed in that RI as well. It's, so, you know, there's a handful of, well, there's more than a handful of things that you can do in RI, but RI is our, is the most restricted of our two industrial zonings that we have. And so as a matter of fact, we have no general industrial zoning in the city of Springfield. And that is not because staff has chosen to do that, that's because the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Planning Commission have chosen to do that in the past. Because GI, you can do just about anything in GI. You can do nuclear reactors, you can do plant renderings, you can do animal renderings. And so it's, I mean, it's just do-all, catch-all, heavy, you know, dynamite manufacturing. It's just unbelievable, the uses that can go on in GI. And we're not opposed to GI, we just wanna make sure that wherever we do GI, it's, shall we say, more rural than other RI zonings that we have, maybe somewhere in the North Industrial Park area, as opposed to Bradley Drive.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? All right, we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollensworth?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero, recommended to the board.
Okay, item number two is a replat of lot two, the city of Springfield property in North Industrial Park. Is there a motion to put this out for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Tell us about the replat, Dave.
This replat is approximately nine and a half acres. It lies between Martin Ray Fabco or Martin Ray Industries and the Dollar General. It faces on Fabco Drive, there, that little former section of 161. The city is selling this parcel to a gentleman by the name of Bill Allen, who has already gotten the site plan approved. His company is Industrial Maintenance Concepts, and one of his bigger customers is Martin Ray. And so they're gonna do their, a lot of their industrial maintenance for their machinery. And they have a storage facility, they will have a storage facility on this parcel as well, which is allowed by the RI zoning. There's an accessory building. Most zonings have an accessory building allowance.
So this is just making it larger?
Well, yes. We sold, well, we were preparing to sell two acres back a year or so ago, and we had the plat made and registered, and then they backed out of that deal. It was for a company that was, guy was gonna move a fastener company in here. So now, we've backed that up and incorporated that plat into this plat. Now, the approval that we as staff are asking the Planning Commission to do tonight is for conditional approval. The surveyor has not been able to get one easement on this plat. And that isn't, there is a sewer lateral that comes from the Dollar General store and down to the sewer that's on the city's property, and it's not shown on this plat at the present time. So we would like for you guys to approve this plat conditional upon getting all the requested changes and the easement shown on that plat. You know, we're trying to get this done as quickly as possible, so that, you know, the city can go ahead and sell this property to Mr. Allen, and he can get his business started.
Didn't we approve something on the two acres seven months ago?
Yes, sir. It was like two and a half acres, and it's incorporated in less than nine and a half. So we're doing away with, we're replating, that's why it's called a replat.
Was it two and a half? Did it have access in the end at that time?
No, it had an access on to 161, and it was just gonna be like a 10,000 square-foot building for a guy to sell fasteners out of. Fasteners South is what it was called.
Will this affect the credit-keeping property at all?
No, the Dollar General is between it and the credit-keeping, yeah.
So it won't?
No.
Even with the sewer line?
No, the sewer line is well on the property that we're selling, so it's well off of the influence that would be had on that property. But as soon as we get this corrected plat showing all the requests that we have, there's like that and one other request showing concrete monuments and things of that nature, we will then move forward with registering the plat, and then the city will make the closing on that property. And so instead of doing it by deed and having all these easements described in legalese, we're just doing it graphically.
Okay, are there any other questions, discussion? We're ready to vote. I guess we need a motion to vote them.
Yep.
Motion for approval.
Conditionally approved, yes.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say, well, we gotta vote now. Let's do it.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes, right?
Please.
Please. Mr. Hollensworth?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
It passes five to zero, conditionally approved.
Thank you.
All right, item number three is Oakland Farms, Phase Three, Section Seven, Bond Renewal. Is there a motion to put this out for discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Okay. Commission, what we have going on here is Daniel Bernstein has this item and the next item on the agenda for bond renewals. The first one, seven, is, would be in a resolution 1903, and it's for an amount of $32,000. And the next one will be for an amount of, what is that, Gina?
Forty...
Forty-five thousand, three hundred. And so, once again, for both of these, we are gonna ask you guys to conditionally approve this item and the next item, because the existing bonds expire February 13th, which is a few days before the February meeting for the Board of Mayor and Alderman. And so we don't have the letters of credit, they're getting letters of credit from Farmers' Bank on the 23rd, and we will move, we will have them in the packet, go into the Board of Mayor and Alderman, or whenever we get them, but we will have them before the 13th. And so if we don't have them for the board meeting on the 14th, or the 15th, rather, we were, we're gonna ask the Board of Mayor and Alderman to conditionally approve these resolutions, contingent upon getting the letters of credit for both sections in hand. So that would be resolution 1902 and 1903. So not, we'll still have to hit the next item, but that's what our intent is, and, you know, and it's just a bonding vehicle to make sure that all the work that the owner and the developer have said that they were gonna do takes place. So, you know, like streetlights, final drive, finish course on the road, curbs, sidewalks, that kind of thing. So they were substantially complete, now they went from $175,000 to forty, 32 and 45 two different times. So they've completed a large amount of this work already.
Is this the last phase of Oakland?
No, there's another, at least a Section Eight, if not another section. So when these guys finish, it's like, you know, most of you haven't been here when they have finished a subdivision, you know, when they've actually come in, it's done, we're good, there's no more work to do. We then, the developer comes back to us and gives what's called a maintenance bond for a year that's calculated based on if something, a percentage of the total work, in the event the surface course cracks, or the concrete fails, or, you know, the light poles... guaranteed, we're not at point yet, hope y'all get one. We've had a subdivision finish up.
We had a lot of subdivision plats come in that were really big for several years there.
Yep.
It just takes a while.
It does. It does take a while.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and your motion, Mr. Hollensworth, is to approve conditionally, correct?
On both bonds.
Are you gonna go ahead and get both of them at the same time? Thank you. So this is items...
Okay, good one here.
Item three and four. Item three and item four.
Both bonds, yes. Thank you, Mr. Hollensworth.
Okay, is there a second to go along with that?
Yes.
All right.
Ready? Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Hollensworth?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero to conditionally approve both bonds for Oakland Farms, Section Seven and Section Six.
Phase Three.
Phase Three.
All right, item number five that we have already added to the agenda, I don't know if we need a motion for discussion, if we've already added...
Well, we just need to go ahead and move to talk about it. We just put it on the agenda, is all we did.
Right. All right, is there a motion for discussion on item number five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dave, what do we have on this one?
This is that little six-lot subdivision that Mr. Batson turned in last year, you know, there's three of the lots front, this is all in Sleepy Hollow, like three of the lots front, Main Street, and then three of the lots front Banderas, and so this $17,000 bond is to ensure that the sidewalks and the street signs are put in properly. That's all there is, 'cause he's got everything else complete. So this is just to ensure that sidewalk, ADA ramp, and street signs are installed. And so Mr. Batson was, well, you know, we miscommunicated, and that got turned in after we took it off the agenda, and so...
But I had already published it in the paper, so it didn't...
So we got it back on there.
Yeah, so, but it was left on, in the paper, so, but we did the dance, and we got it done. And so this one, we would like for the Planning Commission to approve fully, it's gonna go, the letter of credit is included in the packet.
Yes.
A small friend, Mike.
Well, no, I was just, jumped out at me. They didn't build it back to Social Security.
Don't say it, man.
Yeah, we already had that discussion with the bank, and so I'll probably need those back from you all.
I just...
I will shred it.
Who published their Social Security number?
That's their procedure, and so I didn't realize it until I'd gotten it scanned.
I can't believe they put that on there.
Me either.
You would have seen Billy's there.
We're gonna be collecting that stuff, and we will be editing the, we'll be editing the packets.
Yep. I already got Ray Carroll.
Okay. So, yeah, Mike, don't tell everything you know.
I wouldn't tell Billy.
He'll find out.
Hmm, that's unbelievable.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollensworth?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
I don't think we have any other old business, but David has something under other business.
Yes, I would like to discuss with the Planning Commission, and I'd like your feedback on this. The more I look into the zoning ordinance, the more I find certain things. Traditionally, we have treated the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission as two separate entities, when in actuality, they're pretty much one big entity. In the Board of Zoning Appeals rules, in, this would be Section 11, 1304, H4, it says, "The Planning Commission shall be permitted to submit an advisory opinion on any matter before the Board, and such opinion shall be made part of the record of such public hearing." And so in the past, you know, this commission meets a week, or two weeks before the board does. In the past, we've just never brought that kind of thing to you guys. It's just been kind of treated as a separate thing. But I think that it's important that you, as a commission, know what kind of variances people are asking for, and that you have an opportunity to either say, yeah, that, we support that variance, or no, we don't support that variance. Because, you know, you guys are the Planning Commission. So these guys are, the other board is actually varying the zoning ordinance that you guys have to live by, case by case by case. So you just tell me what you guys think, if you want me to start, you know, 'cause we, right now, we have one, two, three a month. We, and some of variances now, we'll tell you, special uses is not really, or conditional uses are not really variances, but we can bring that information to you, too. And a case in point, a special use or a conditional use is a daycare in a residential zone. They're not allowed by RI, but if you apply to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Board of Zoning Appeals can say, yeah, we'll let you have a daycare with certain stipulations. You know, I think it's a maximum of seven children, and that includes the children of the people that are running the daycare. So, I mean, if you want all of that kind of stuff, we'll be glad to bring it all to you, or if you just want the variances where somebody, you know, has to get a side yard setback variance so they can build a carport for their, to be able to pull their car in so their handicapped son can get out from underneath it, and you need to know that, and you, or you want to know that, you either wanna support those types of things, or give your opinion that that shouldn't happen, I want you guys to have that opportunity.
So that would be something that would be an item on the agenda?
Yes, and we would have an item with, for each variant. No, no, we'd have one item to discuss each variance, and then you could then make a motion on each...
Yeah, I mean, 'cause I've always been under the impression that the Appeals Board was, if you didn't get the answer you wanted out of this board, you could appeal it to them.
Right.
You know, if something, if we said, no, we're not gonna, you know, the money will give you this variance, money will give you whatever, and then you had the opportunity to go for the Appeals Board and see what they said, that they will be the last stop you could get to.
But you don't see a lot of it.
If we don't see it, we don't know. If they're going around the Planning and Zoning Board, and then all of a sudden, we find, we know, you know, something's done that we don't know, they say, well, we didn't discuss that, we don't know about that.
Right. And, you know, and a lot of them...
I think we should be able to view it and make a decision, or we could save the Appeals Board a whole lot of time.
Well, I don't think, you don't get to, you get to give an informed opinion to them. You get to say, as the Planet, we'd say, the Planning Commission discussed this and voted 9-0, that they are not in favor of this variance being given. That would become public record in that meeting. They can listen to you.
But if we voted 9 to approve, they don't go for the Appeals Board?
No, it does.
It still goes to the Appeals Board.
All we're doing is...
Why would the Appeals Board receive anything before we do?
Because you guys do not give variances on setbacks, and you don't do conditional uses.
We do it all the time in here.
No, you don't.
And David comes to us and says, hey, we need to change this zoning right here to move this.
That's changing it, but you don't do it on a, this is a case-by-case basis.
A variance is just something that's irregular than the regular things that we have for...
Like we, you know, when we changed, you know, we changed the zoning, we did an ordinance. We asked you to recommend this amendment to the zoning ordinance, which was for the, last one I can remember is the Historic Preservation Committee, and Reed Number, all of that stuff, that kind of thing, to get it, to make more sense in the way it works. Well, you guys voted to recommend to the board that they approve ordinance 18, whatever it was, which amended the zoning ordinance to do certain things. You didn't vote to give a variance for any of that. You were actually recommended to the board to change the ordinance.
Does the Appeals Board need any input?
I think they do. I'm just gonna tell you. I've been here for 21 years, the Planning Commission has never been involved with it, and it shows. It really does. I'm just gonna say it like it is, they haven't met a variance they don't want. I've been here 21 years, and I cannot, in my 21 years, remember a time that they denied a variance.
That might give them a little more option, too. If everybody, you know, you just got two or three people in a room, and they're for whatever it is, and then we have an opinion that says, well, we don't think that's a good idea, that might give them the option.
You know, and there are some that are good, you know, we had a variance just a couple of months ago, where a guy has actually three frontages on his lot, one on 431, Curtis Wood, what was the other one, Gina? Anyway, right there.
Right there off of 431.
He didn't have a backyard by the zoning ordinance's definition, but he had a large recreational vehicle that, by the ordinance, you have to park in your backyard. So he goes like, what do I do? I don't really have a backyard. So we went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and asked them to designate the...
Backyard.
Off of the one piece of the line that didn't have a road frontage is his backyard, so he could put a driveway in and park his RV and be in conformance with the zoning ordinance. Now, some of those are like that. Those are good, those are good. Sometimes, you know, they just, you know, they shouldn't be given, but that, once again, is my opinion, having worked with this document for 21 years. You know, it's tough, it's tough not to give variances. It's tough to be the guy or the lady that says, I understand your dilemma, but that's not the intent of this document. And most people, given the opportunity, wanna be the good guy. And that is, historically, we can go back and look at the minutes, historically, over the last 21 years or longer, I'm gonna say 99.9% of all variances have been given. You see, now, in special uses, conditional uses, those are some things that you might wanna be interested in, too, because there was a, it never came, but there was a person that wanted to buy the old Owens Chapel...
No, New Chapel.
New Chapel, men's club.
Clubhouse on Lawrence Lane.
And wanted to put a group home in it.
I remember that well.
Okay, and now, of course, everybody knew, and... Okay, and now, of course, everybody knew, and there were gonna be plenty of people show up at the Board of Zoning Appeals, but, you know, it's a, I think the Planning Commission should have input, you know, on something like that, though, because it's not the intent for you to put in a group home in a fairly nice neighborhood. You know, the intent is to put those in, in MROs, where, you know, multi-residential or commercials. That's the intent. I, now, and why, this document was done by the Planning Department of the State of Tennessee thirty years ago. And it's a beast, it's an old beast.
We might break a variance up, is it always a public hearing, or?
Well-
Well, I send out letters to the adjoining property owners.
Okay.
So, and, and there's something that Gina and I are gonna talk about as well, is how that meeting should be run, as opposed to the way it's run now. And so, she and I are, she's gonna be reviewing those rules of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then we're gonna have a discussion. I may be interpreting it totally wrong. We're gonna have a, a discussion about it, we'll come to an agreement, one way or another. But the intent is, there is supposed to be a public hearing. There is supposed to be the opportunity for the person who wants the variance to come forward and say, "This is why I want the variance, this is why I need the variance. The variance is important to me for these reasons." People that live around the person that's asking for the variance have the opportunity to come and say, "No, this is why I don't want him to have it or her to have it, it's gonna negatively impact me," or this, or, you know, whatever reasons that they have. So, you know, that's the intent. And then after the public hearing on each one of those variances, then there should be discussion by the board to determine what they want to do.
And there's always one person off of this board on that board, right?
Yes, our present member, the present planning commissioner that is also on the Board of Zoning Appeals is Buzzy Poole. And he is the chairman of that board at the present time.
I mean, I think he's got married, I, I might, I think there needs, there needs to be some input. It's, especially, I know a deal out there with us, you know, she lost her funding, basically, and that's why it got shut down real quick. I'm like, I think the day before, we were gonna have the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, but like I said, it, it kind of left us out of it, and that was a big, big deal. It wasn't just a, a little small deal. It was gonna be a big deal out there.
Some of things become big deals, yes.
And, of course, we, on any kind of appeal or any, you, you, you can't look at just how it affects the person that wants something done or to change, you gotta look at how it affects the neighborhood, if it is a neighborhood, or how it affects neighbors on down the road, or how it affects everything. And I think the more input you have from another board, it will probably help them make a decision, you know, based on merit, not based on like, like you said a minute ago, you've always got somebody wanting to be a friend of somebody and get it done for. Well, I understand that, but then again, you gotta see how it affects everybody. And it's just certain things you can't do.
Yep, you know, and that's the thing about this ordinance, the, the more I rate it, the more I discover there's more descriptions of what the community development director and his or her staff can't do, as opposed to what we can do. And, and, I mean, it's fifty-fifty, you know. We issue all these, we issue a bunch of paperwork, but repeatedly, it says, "You can't not enforce the ordinance." See, and, and I'm in a unique situation as compared to other community development directors that we've had in the past, you know. Historically, those individuals have been planners and, uh, type people, not an engineer. I'm an engineer, so I'm licensed by the state, and I'm recop, ethically required to in, to adhere to all state, federal, local laws. This is one of our local laws. I have to do my best ability to be fair and enforce this equally on everybody and not, you know, and, and do it what the ordinance says, or I could lose my license. And so, you know, I love the city of Springfield, but I'll be the, I'll be the meanest man in Springfield if it keeps me from losing my civil engineering license. So, you know, and it, once again, you know, we, we had some training, we need to schedule up some more training for you guys so that you can understand, you know, the variance process, you know, we, we could talk, you know, I can talk about that for another hour, because there's a whole nother chapter about variances. This is just, what we're talking about is the rules on how that board is supposed to run. So, you know, and there's just, you know, item after item after item that's in our zoning ordinance that you guys know is kind of in there, but you, you know, you might not know how we come to certain decisions. And it's, as planning commissioners, I think that's important for you guys to do. And then as Springfield grows, as Springfield moves forward, as more people become interested in the way our government works, and, and I think I've seen it happen over the last ten years, more and more people are interested in how we spend our money and how we work and what we do. You know, it, it's gonna be imperative that you guys are, are knowledgeable and not just sitting up there being figureheads. You know, I don't want, like, Mike and I had a conversation the other day. I don't want you guys to be a rubber stamp for the city of Springfield's staff. I want you guys to be the thinkers and the leaders of where we need to go and how we need to look at our planning and our land use in the future. You know, and we can have discussions like this anytime, but, you know, we got, at some point, as a, as a group, you gotta say, "There's the mountain, we want to climb it." We'll, we'll pack them, we'll pack the mules and put on the boots, and we'll say, "Come on, follow us," and we'll hedge all that away.
No question. If, if, I see your point about us being involved in this appeals board, but if we will need to make an educated decision on something like this, don't we need to be part of a public hearing?
Well, no, we can, you know, we can tell you what the, the, the individual's asking for in, in the variance.
Right, yeah.
And then we can tell you what the zoning ordinance says.
Right. But if we got, if, if, but if we're not, if we don't hear both sides of the story like the appeals board does, then are we making an educated decision? If we say, "No, we don't want to do it," then, then the appeals board is, is under pressure not to approve it because we said not, but we not sent through the public hearing to hear both sides.
And that's the difference between what you guys do and what they do.
Right.
Your job is to adhere to the zoning ordinance, okay? It's not, you, you're, yours go, okay, R seven has ten yard set, or eight yard setbacks, it has a twenty yard front yard setback, it has a twenty yard rear yard setback. You know, there's, it's that way for a reason. No, you don't get that variance. You don't get to build that bigger house on a seven thousand square foot lot. That, that's your guy's stance.
Right.
Now, the Board of Zoning Appeals is, you know, and there's nine criteria to give a variance. And one of those is, you know, would you give it to anybody else? Would you get, you know, if, if David Allen and Mike Hollinsworth came to that board, and one of them knew the board, one of them didn't, would you give the variance to both guys? If the answer to that question is no, then you don't need to be giving that variance. You know, and financial gain can't be considered, you know, if you allow me to do this variance, this will make my property worth ten thousand more dollars, and so, no, you can't.
Even if our input, it's still gonna come down to their decision.
It's their decision.
Their decision.
We just recommend.
We just recommend.
It's their decision.
I have not, I know one incident, since I've been on this board, that I can think back in my brain, that we didn't go along with staff. And staff recommends we approve this. They may not get approved unanimously, but most time it does. I only remember one incident that it did. And that was when the, somebody wanted to put a doghouse out here at Greenbrier, Edgey Greenbrier, in somebody's backyard.
Yeah, it was a kennel operation.
That's the only one I can remember right now off the top of my head. But, you know, he, I think we should be involved somewhat. I mean, you're the planning director, if you think we should be, hear some of these things, you know, some of the Mickey Mouse stuff we probably need to hear, but something that's gonna impact a big group of people.
Well, it will, you know, any variance impact, in a subdivision, input impacts twenty, thirty families.
You know, it's, it's like anything else, it's gonna come down to their decision. I mean, we, we can't sway their decision as far as, "No, we're not gonna do it," because it's, it's, it's appealed to them.
And that Board of Zoning Appeals is supposed to get as much training and- very little in the past, getting training that you're supposed to have, and getting the Board of Zoning Appeals the training that they're supposed to have. We, we hope to soon rectify that.
I think when we had training before about variances, it said that, they were talking about the only reason we should give one would be unusual topography of a lot or unusual shape of a lot. And we've done that a time or two, I know with the, with the Hollinsworth trucking out there on Fifth.
That was almost-
They had a really odd lot, and it laid funny, and-
And that was for the site plan, I believe.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, it's not, it might, it was a variance, but I, it wasn't like for a side setback or anything like that, I think it was for a var-
It had a hard topography and the lot was shaped hard.
Right, it's the one out here on Fifth Avenue, the-
Right.
Where they wanted to build the, um-
They built storage building.
The storage building, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think, this is just me, I think this commission should be, you know, and you don't have to, we can, you don't have to render a decision. You, we can say, you know, John Doe wants to do this variance, you have a statement one way or another. No, we're good. You do not have to provide a statement. You know, you just have to have the opportunity to do so if this commission wants to do so. You know, not doing something is just as good as voting to say, "Yes, approve it, no, don't approve it." You can just, you, you can abstain, you can just say, "We're good, y'all make that decision, that's why you're there." But if it, you know, but if it rings dear and true to you, you know, at least y'all can discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, we should, we should have the option to discuss it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can see kind of what Alan's talking about too. We, we want to hear all the things that they'll hear, as far as the public hearing and the neighbors around where the property is or whatever, but.
But we, we can give you what the zoning ordinance says, you know, like, you were talking about that dog kennel business that wanted to be in. You know, the, the ordinance doesn't allow us to say, "No, you don't get that special use," or "No, you don't get that rezoning." That's you guys. So, you know, if somebody comes to us and wants to rezone something, y'all are the ones, y'all are the gatekeepers. Yes, you can rezone that, no, you can't.
Well, we just recommend that too, though, actually.
You do?
Yeah.
But if you recommend, if, if your recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman is not to approve, I have yet, not yet seen them approve an ordinance. There have been several zoning ordinance that came to this commission, well, that, dog kennel was one. Boom, no, they didn't approve it. And it, and it, they didn't approve it in a majority. They, they said, they, you know, that the motions have to be positive, move to approve this rezoning, seven no's.
I, I think that, uh, that dog kennel place, it was a little bit more to that story, wasn't it? I think the club governors gave it, uh, to a church to do something.
Yes.
And the church changed their mind.
Yeah, changed their mind, they're giving money to the church.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it was a little more complicated.
It wa, it was, it was more complicated than that, but-
But it still, you know, and that's the only thing I can remember, us not really approving, when staff recommends, because, I mean, y'all've done all the research, y'all've looked at all of it.
Well, I can think of one just a couple of months ago that y'all didn't approve, and that was when we made the motion to call Rob Mont's bonding instrument, you know, like, no.
Yeah, the bond, how'd, how'd that come out?
Thank you.
I mean, I'm talking about, I meant to ask you earlier, uh, the boy over at Lakeside, did he ever get his, his bond paid up?
We're still in that process, talk about Autumnwood, we still have to set it, they're in the process of getting us a, an irrevocable letter of credit.
Okay, I mean, I knew it was-
He's, he's just down to final course and some sidewalks and some certification. He's ninety, uh, well, he's eighty percent finished.
One of the things I like about being on this board, that you guys do such a good job of, you know, looking out for Springfield, that when it comes to us, it's, you know, pretty much a slam dunk, uh.
Well, you know, we appreciate that, but I don't, but I want y'all involved. I mean, you, you, you are the guys that vote, you are the guys that, when that vote tally is published as public record, and your name has got the yes, and your name has got the no, some, you know, they haven't done it yet, but that's all public record. Somebody's gonna be upset someday about a decision that you guys make, and they're gonna get that vote tally shake.
I just like putting out, you know, telling you what we think about it, that you do it.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, it, it's a, it's a different world that we live in now than twenty years ago. You know, if somebody doesn't like the way you vote, Twitter, at Deadgum, so-and-so, not looking out for such-and-such, and boo. You, it, I mean, that's, we're just a little low Springfield, but, you know, people, people, it's different now.
Is this something that we need to vote on?
Well, no, you can just, you can, I mean, if-
Do you need an answer today, my question?
No, I don't need an answer today. I can tell you this, what we'll do is on the next Planning Commission agenda, there will be an item listing out the variances. If you choose to approve that for discussion, we will discuss the variances. If you choose not to, we'll move forward, and the, the Planning Commission will have no comment or input in the public hearing sector of the Board of Zoning Appeals two weeks later.
So, they're two weeks later?
Actually, well, it's always the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Exactly, it's not usually two weeks.
Okay.
We're the first Thursday.
You know, I, I agree with Alan, if, if it's something pretty good size, it looks like it's gonna be, some of us need to go to the public hearing. You need to hear, you need to wait both sides, uh, to see what's going on. I mean, really, that, and, and I think we're all interested enough in Springfield. I know it takes time sometimes, but if it's something pretty good size, want to go and show up and listen to the public hearing, kind of see which way it's going, see, see what, what everybody's complaint is, and the pros and cons of it, and, and then make a decision off of that. I mean, that's, that's, that's the only fair way to do it, because if we make a decision, we don't hear everything, then we're, we're kind of blind.
Right.
We're going to kind of blind.
And, you know, and that's the thing about, as planning commissioners and Board of Zoning Appeals people, you know, I think the Board, we, like I said, Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission. I think the planning, the Board of Zoning, all five of the Board of Zoning Appeals members, or four other than Buzzy, who didn't hear either tonight, but that's beside the point, they should be here, they should hear the discussions that you have. They should understand where you as a Planning Commission are, so that that could help them make their decisions when it comes to these variances. Because y'all are not two different entities, well, you are, but, but you're part of a bigger group. You work hand in hand with each other to, to make Springfield a better place. So, and in, in, in the same vein, it would not hurt each and every one of you to be at the next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, second Tuesday of this month.
Gina, could you send me an email of all the things you got to do?
The appeals board is the final, that's the final step, it doesn't go before the mayor, Board of Alderman, does it?
No, if, now, it's not the final step. If Mr. Hollinsworth asked for a variance, and it was granted, and Mr. Hollinsworth's neighbor are opposed to that, they can hire an attorney and file a lawsuit, at which point, an injunction comes into play, and you ca, he can't move forward with his project until the court decides whether that variance was a good variance or not. So, it's not, but it's, goes to the court level. I don't know if it goes to the city court level or to the county court level, it just says a court of, of competent- It just says a court of, of competent jurisdiction, is what the zoning ordinance says. So, I'm not an attorney, don't even wanna think that I know anything about any of this stuff. I just try to do the best I can with it. So I don't know what really a court of competent jurisdiction is. But you can pay your bucks to the attorney and have him tell you what it is.
Just Judy.
I think it's civil court.
Right.
I think it's civil.
Okay. I wouldn't, that makes sense to me.
That's what I have been told before, but I haven't seen it in writing.
Right, so, we'll do, we'll, next, next planning commission meeting, we'll just have, the last, the last item will be, if you choose to discuss the variances that are coming up, and the next, we've already, we got two.
No, we got, we have two next, or the next meeting this month.
Right, and then.
As of right now, I don't have any for.
February?
February.
Okay, so, you know, and if there's not any, we won't have any, but we've historically been having, you know, at least one.
Yeah, like I said, I think, just do what you're talking about there, put it on the agenda, we'll look in and we'll make a decision.
Or not.
Or not.
I mean, and I can send, I can send you out, I'll start, I'll probably start working on it tomorrow, more in depth, my packet and my agenda for the next, for the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be fine, I mean, the more informed we are, the better off we're gonna be anyway.
We might wanna just look at it and then say, hey, this is interesting, we need to go to the public hearing.
Yes.
And show up for the public hearing.
Right, it's pretty important, we need to show up.
And, you know, and that's the thing, if y'all, as a planning commission, don't wanna take a stand, but you as a commissioner, hey, I might wanna go, and I might wanna say one way or another in the public hearing, you're allowed to do that. Hence, public hearing. Okay, I'm through, I, I mean, unless y'all have any more questions, I don't wanna make y'all hang out with me longer than I, than you want to.
Has anybody got anything else?
I'm good.
We're standing adjourned there.
Okay, let me get your packets.
Let me turn Billy passing in, I got that memorized.